Good evening. I would like to call Monday, October fourteenth, common council meeting to order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a certain agenda item or during privilege of the floor, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name, address, and topic you are speaking on, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following in the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name and I live at address and I would like to speak on, for, or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to note that if you are here for Bill forty-two twenty-four, that has been tabled until October twenty-eighth meeting. At this time, we will have Pastor Stephen Love from Redemption City Church to come and give us our invocation. If you are here, welcome, and we welcome you to come up to the podium. If not, I will ask Pastor Lee to give the invocation, please.
Wait, is there somebody? You see?
Hold on one second. Do you see him online?
He's online.
Is that? His name is that? There's no name attached, but... Is that Pastor Love online that is unmuted? If not, I will ask whoever that is to mute yourself if you're not Pastor Love at this time, and we will ask Pastor Lee to give the invocation.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. To gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to work on the city's business. We ask God that you would open up our hearts and our minds to be able to receive the information, to be able to process the information, and to make the best decisions for our community and for our city. We ask God that you would look on this great city of South Bend and allow your love to rain down from heaven. Help us to be better brothers and neighbors and friends, and help us to make decisions that's going to impact generations for this community. And we just ask today, God, that everything be done in love and that we would represent all of the aspects of our community today as we handle the city's business. All of these things, we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Clerk Toronto, will you please call the roll?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Naskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
All nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the report from Subcommittee on Minutes for September twenty-third.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has expected, has inspected the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the Subcommittee on Minutes Committee? Or motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. At this time, I would ask, ask for a motion to resolve to the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from the staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. I would like to first accept a... A motion. I couldn't think of the word. Accept a motion for substitute bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four.
Who to accept a substitute bill?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Clerk Toronto, would you please give substitute bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at six twenty-three Olive Street, Councilman and District number six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The zoning and adquisition committee met today, and we bring substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four with a favorable recommendation to the council.
All right. As the petitioner present, I ask that you state your name and address for the record and give us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Thank you. Good evening. Carrie Myers with the Department of Community Investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building, and I'm here on behalf of the petition submitted by Luis Castillo and Fabiola Garcia for six twenty-three Olive Street, requesting a special exception for restaurant use in Urban Flex District.
There we go.
Next slide, please. Thank you. You may remember this petition from last month where the petitioner was requesting a retail use, but after further discussions with the petitioner, it became more apparent that the use would be less retail and more restaurant-oriented type of use, serving shakes and teas and smoothies of the healthy nature. The building was designed and has just historically been utilized as a corner retail service space. The introduction of a small-scale restaurant space should enhance the surrounding area by providing a new local amenity. The proposed use as a restaurant is still consistent with the city plan, pursuing a mix of land uses along major corridors and other locations identified in the future land use map. The parcel fronts a small commercial node that serves the community in a traditional neighborhood development plan. This comes to the council from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, and the petitioners are here.
All right. Petitioner, would you like to add any comments to the presentation? They don't... They don't want to add any comments. All right. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? We've talked about this one in committee, and so... Clerk Toronto, at this point, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone online or in person wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on substitute bill thirty-eight twenty... Thirty-eight twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
I'll make a motion to send substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. Substitute bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Bill forty-two dash twenty-four has been tabled till October the twenty-eighth. Clerk Toronto, would you please give bill fifty-two dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at eight twelve LaSalle Avenue, Councilman and District number four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair. The zoning and adquisition committee met this afternoon, and we bring bill fifty-two twenty-four to the council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. The petitioner is present, I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill before us.
Presenter.
First. That's what I'm saying. Yes, sir. I'm... I'm...
Okay.
Giving it to her.
Good evening. Carrie Myers with Department of Community Investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. I'm here on behalf of a petition submitted by Carrie Kramer for eight twelve LaSalle Avenue, requesting a special exception for restaurant use in UF Urban Flex District. Next slide, please. Thank you. The petitioner is requesting to use the commercial building as a small-scale carryout restaurant mostly. It's located along LaSalle Avenue, close proximity to South Bend Clinic as well as St. Joseph High School football field across the street. Also, it's very close proximity to the downtown and NC zoning districts to the west. The small-scale restaurant's consistent with the surrounding traditional neighborhood development pattern and will serve to enhance the area. The building was designed and has historically been utilized as retail service space. Introducing a restaurant will activate the space and enhance the neighborhood by offering a new local amenity. The proposed use is consistent with city plan two thousand and six, pursuing a mix of land uses along major corridors and other locations identified by the future land use map. While not located within the northeast neighborhood plan boundaries, the proposed restaurant use is immediately adjacent to and compatible with the plan. The Board of Zoning Appeals has forward a favorable recommendation to the council, and the petitioner is here to answer any questions.
All right. Petitioner? Oh... Extra petitioner, if you're here, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark Kramer. I'm here representing my wife, Carrie Kramer. My address is seven one 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 five Grove Falcon Court in Niles, Michigan. Got the, actually, the restaurant owner here that's planning on opening the restaurant. It's going to be a small fifteen-capacity carryout restaurant with a few tables. I think it fits with the neighborhood, close to St. Joe High School and Notre Dame, and I think that would be a great benefit for the area.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? If not, we will now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill fifty dash... Fifty-two dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on bill fifty-two dash twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion's approved. Bill fifty-two twenty-four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Bill fifty-two dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, I ask that you would give bill fifty-four dash twenty-four a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number one zero eight nine one dash two two and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Um, yes, there is, Chair. This was heard personal in finance this afternoon and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner is here. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and give us key points regarding the bill.
Excuse me. Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on twelfth floor. It was just mentioned earlier. This is the reaffirmation of the police collective bargain agreement that was approved back in two... Twenty twenty-two, and this sets the salary... Salary and wages and monetary benefits for the police members for twenty twenty-five.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? All right. If not, we'll now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill fifty-four dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on bill fifty-four dash twenty-four is now closed. Um, I will now entertain a motion.
I'm doing... Sorry.
Go ahead. No, no.
I'd like to make a motion that bill fifty-four dash twenty-four be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Bill fifty-four dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would now like to accept a motion to accept substitute bill fifty-five dash twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
There's... Um, there's been a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. Clerk Toronto, please give substitute bill fifty-five dash twenty-four a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Is there a committee report?
Um, yes, there is, Chair. This was heard in personal and finance this afternoon and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner is present. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Yes. Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on twelfth floor. Bill number fifty-five twenty-four allows for annually increase of three percent over the four-year agreement with the Teamster Union with a one-time market rate adjustment of six percent in twenty twenty-five for Teamster... Teamster positions. So after several... Several meetings over the summer and productive conversations with the union, the city and the Teamster Union were able to come to an agreement on their new collective bargain agreement. This... Uh, this agreement also includes a two thousand dollar residency bonus for Teamster members that reside within the city limits.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill fifty-five dash twenty-four? I ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Jared Warnock, uh, two four oh five East Edison Road, South Bend, Indiana, and I represent the Teamsters. Uh, after many, as Mr. Willis said, after many meaningful negotiations with the city and its departments, um, I'm requesting council support on bill fifty-five twenty-four on behalf of our membership. Thank you for your consideration for these hard-working men and women. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone that's wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on substitute bill fifty-five dash twenty-four is now closed. Councilmembers, would you like to make any statements? Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to just thank Mr. Warnock and the members for their... Their concerns expressed during the negotiations. It's always good hearing, uh, wha... What the employees are dealing with, uh, on a daily basis and their concerns about their livelihood and their working conditions, and, uh, I... I thank you for that and for, uh, the, uh... Cooperative efforts that were done during negotiations. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I served with, um, Councilman Warner on the negotiation process. It was a good-faith bargaining agreement, a lot of dialogue, very positive dialogue, so I would like to commend everybody on all sides, and it was basically the whole summer. Um, but it is a good bargaining agreement. So, thank you, everyone, for your hard work and for the hard men and women that serve our community.
Ms. White?
Yes. Um, I saw... I also served on the... The team, and as I made mention during the committee meeting, uh, this afternoon. Just very, very grateful in terms of the atmosphere, the, uh, sense for... That we need to collaborate and really work together. I appreciate every... Every person who gave of their times, uh, the Teamsters, their representative, as well as members from the, um, city. Uh, it was a long time coming, but I'm very pleased with what we have so far. So I just want to say thank you and look forward to working with the Teamsters moving forward.
Anyone else? If not, um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who got the deal done, and we're really appreciative that for you to come and say that... That you're in support of this, so thank you very much. All right. Um, I will now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
That we send bill fifty-five dash twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Substitute bill.
Second.
All right. There's been a, um, a motion in second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Uh, substitute bill fifty-five dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, would you please give bill fifty-six dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Uh, yes, there is, Chair. This was heard in personal and finance this afternoon, and it was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner is present. I ask that you state your name and your address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on twelfth floor. Uh, bill number fifty-six dash twenty-four increases the mayor's salary from twenty twenty-four to, you know, one twenty... One hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars to one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars for twenty twenty-five. This is a three percent increase, uh, similar to, or just as... Just the same as the, uh, three percent increase for all non-bargaining employees.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill fifty-six twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
All right. Uh, at this point, the public hearing portion of bill, uh, fifty- All right, uh, at this point, the public hearing portion of Bill, uh, fifty-six dash twenty-four is now closed. Uh, council members, would you like to make any comments or statements, or I will entertain a motion?
Move to, um, approve Bill fifty-six twenty-four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Um, Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, uh, Bill fifty-six dash twenty-four will be, will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill fifty-seven dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the common council members for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
All right, um, is there a committee report?
Um, yes, there is Chair. This bill was heard in committee this afternoon and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right, we see that our president is present and we ask that she would, uh, state her name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Sheriff McBride, four fifteen East Broadway, South Bend. And, uh, thank you council for having me present today. The, uh, salary ordinance is the standard, uh, three percent increase that is in line with the administration throughout the, uh, city, um, administration for most departments. And that is the only change, and just noted in the salary summary as well for some council that may not know that, uh, we wanted to make sure that the other positions, um, still remained for next year that we did vote on already is making sure that we have the paralegal and the executive administrative position and interns in there. So there's no change with that, that we have already approved, so I come before you to ask that you, uh, approve a three percent increase for the council.
All right, council members, do you have any questions? If not, we will now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public looking to speak in favor of Bill fifty-seven dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone present or online wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on, uh, Bill fifty-seven dash twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Bill fifty-seven twenty-four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner.
Fifty-six twenty-four, apologize. Fifty-six.
Um, it is fifty-seven twenty-four to the full council for a favorable recommendation.
What was that?
Yeah.
Did we do fifty-seven dash twenty-four? Okay, a- and there, was there a second?
Second.
All right, there was a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you.
Bill fifty, uh, fifty-seven dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would like to entertain a motion that Bill fifty-eight dash twenty-four and Bill fifty-nine twenty-four will be heard together.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a move, uh, there's been a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. Clerk Toronto, it's all on you. Oh, I'm sorry, please, please give it a second reading. Fifty-eight twenty-four and fifty-nine twenty-four.
Fifty-eight twenty-four, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year twenty twenty-five. Fifty-nine twenty-four, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum salaries and wages of deputies and non-bargaining employees appointed by the city clerk of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
All right, is there a committee report?
Um, yes, there is Chair. Bill fifty-eight twenty-four and fifty-nine twenty-four were heard in personal and finance today and were given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right, we have our clerk, the petitioner present. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening, council. Bianca Toronto, City Clerk with offices on the fourth floor of this building. Um, before you, um, is an overview of bill numbers fifty-eight twenty-four and fifty-nine twenty-four, which is stating the city clerk salary and my staff. Um, and so for bill number fifty-eight twenty-four, this is the, this is the twenty twenty-four city clerk salary, and then with a three percent, this will be the twenty twenty-five city clerk salary, and no increases are being asked. It's just the traditional three percent. And then for fifty-nine twenty-four, um, these are the caps, and we're, I'm just asking for the normal three percent raise there, and then we have one intern, um, listed there as well, public relations intern. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Council members, do you have any questions? If not, we will now go to the public hearing portion. Uh, Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill fifty-eight twenty-four or fifty-nine twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill fifty-eight dash twenty-four and Bill fifty-nine twenty-four is now closed. Um, I would now entertain a motion regarding fifty-eight twenty-four. Then we'll come back and hear a motion for fifty-nine twenty-four.
I move that we send Bill fifty-eight dash twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Right, Bill fifty-eight twenty-four will now be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, I will now entertain a motion regarding fifty-nine dash twenty-four.
Move to send fifty-nine twenty-four to the whole council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right, fifty-nine dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would now like to accept a motion to accept the third substitute for Bill sixty dash twenty-four.
So moved.
I know what you're doing, Doctor.
Excuse me?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Eyes have it, motion passes. All right, Clerk Toronto, would you please give third substitute sixty dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. This was heard in personal and finance this afternoon and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
I see that our petitioner is present. I ask that you would state your name and address for the record and give us key points regarding the bill.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor. Uh, Bill number sixty dash twenty-four sets the salary and monetary benefits for all non-bargaining employees, allows for a three percent increase to salaries for twenty twenty-five. Uh, also includes a two thousand dollar residency bonus for all non-bargaining employees that, uh, live within the city limits.
All right, all right, uh, council members, do you have any questions? If not, I will now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone, uh, from the public wishing to speak in favor of third substitute bill?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
And is there anyone looking to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on third substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four.
Yep.
Yep.
There we go. Uh, it's now closed. Uh, I will now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
I'll make a motion to send a third substitute bill sixty twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right, third substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the com- committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion carries.
The full council is now back in session. This is a portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken on bills that we've just heard in the committee of the whole. Clerk Toronto, will you please give substitute Bill thirty-eight twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at six twenty-three Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Councilor Lee. Is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four?
Yes, substitute Bill thirty-eight dash twenty-four was heard in the committee of the whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill thirty-eight twenty-four.
Move for passage.
Been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill thirty-eight twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty dash twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, leaving taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civic, of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time when the same shell take effect.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill fifty dash twenty-four?
Yes, it comes to the commi- from the committee of the whole to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty dash twenty-four.
Move for passage.
Second.
Second.
You have something? It's a third reading only. Thank you. Um, what we're discussing is this bill have been heard, and this is third reading only. And so, um, there's no presentation that is warranted at this time. It's just a council vote. So, um, just wanted to make sure that we had clarification on that. So, Mr. Willis, you do not have to make a presentation because we've already, um, had a presentation and discussion about it. So with that being said, I will turn back again. Uh, there was a motion on the floor and did someone make the motion, or I was waiting on the motion? Who made the motion? For the record, I'm trying to get clarity. Do we recall who made the motion? Clerk Toronto, did you mark who made the motion? Clerk Toronto? You, you marked who made the motion? Okay.
I'll make it again.
I was gonna say, I made, I made.
I'll make the motion that.
That's what I'm trying to get on record to make sure we have clarity.
That fifty dash twenty-four, uh, move for passage.
Second.
There's been a new motion by Pastor, uh, uh, First District Representative Lee and second by Ophelia Gooden Rogers, for the record, so that motion will stand. And, um, is there any, um, Clerk Toronto, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ordinance fifty dash twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-one dash twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's twenty twenty-five budget and leaving the tax and fixing the rate of the taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill fifty-one dash twenty-four?
Yes. Um, Bill fifty-one twenty-four was heard in the committee behold and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill fifty-one twenty-four.
Motion for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Wade. Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-one dash twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill fifty-two dash twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at eight twelve La Salle Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion for passage.
Been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Wade. President, Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-two dash twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you give a third reading for bill fifty-four dash twenty-four?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Reaffirming ordinance number one zero eight one nine dash two-two and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding bill fifty-four dash twenty-four?
Yes, uh, fifty-four twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding bill fifty-four twenty-four.
I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-four twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give substitute bill fifty-five twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Fixing maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar years 2025, 2026, 2027, and 2028.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding bill fifty-five twenty-four?
Yes, it was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill fifty-five twenty-four.
Motion for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-five twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give bill fifty-six twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding fifty-six twenty-four?
Fifty-six twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding bill fifty-six twenty-four.
Motion for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-six twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give bill fifty-seven twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Setting the annual salary for the common council members for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding bill fifty-seven twenty-four?
Bill fifty-seven twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding bill fifty-seven twenty-four.
Move for passage. Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-seven twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give bill fifty-eight twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding bill fifty-eight twenty-four?
Bill fifty-eight twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding fifty-eight twenty-four.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-eight twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give bill fifty-nine twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Fixing maximum salaries and wages of deputies and non-bargaining employees appointed by the city clerk of the city, of the city of South Bend, Indiana for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding bill fifty-nine twenty-four?
Bill fifty-nine twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now entertain a motion regarding bill fifty-nine twenty-four.
Move for passage. Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill fifty-nine twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you give third substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year 2025.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four?
Yep, third substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole, comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion regarding substitute bill sixty dash twenty-four.
Move for passage. Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill sixty dash twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one a reading?
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana. Commonly known as six nineteen Sherman Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six and six twenty Sherman Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six. And one zero two one and a half through ten twenty-three and a half, Lincoln Way West, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one six. An economic revalidation area for purposes of an eight-year real property tax abatement for Property Bros. LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the bill was heard in community investment this afternoon and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, petitioner. Welcome.
Thank you, um, President McBride, Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the fourteenth floor. This is the fourth time that council would have gone through this abatement, so I'll be quick on this particular one. Um, this is a confirming resolution that would confirm in multifamily residential abatement for Property Bros. LLC for the building of four brand-new duplexes at the corner of Lincoln Way and Sherman. Um, this is phase two in a larger project. Property Bros. LLC uh, received a tax abatement last year for phase one, which included two rehabs and a new duplex uh, in the same area. Um, total investment for this new phase is estimated to be 1.44 million dollars. So a pretty significant investment on behalf of Property Bros. Um, there's the tax numbers for your viewership. Uh, currently, the empty vacant lots only get about $650 a year in property taxes. Uh, with this investment, we anticipate uh, about $15,000 combined in property taxes, you know, at the expiration of this abatement. So uh, Jordan Richardson has had, he's Property Bros. LLC CEO. He's had travel issues today. I believe he's online now. I don't know, Jordan, if you want to um, say something quickly for the council members?
Hi, Eric. How council, uh, of course, thank you all for making the time and being here and doing the work that you do. I won't say before you long, just uh, thank you for the opportunity to do the, the work here and uh, we're excited to keep, to keep going and pressing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, Jordan Richardson, twelve fifty-one North Eddie Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that being said, council, I'll ask if there are any questions for the presenter or the petitioner? Seeing none. I will um, open up for public comments. Uh, Clerk Toronto, do you see anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Same said. Do you see anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. I will turn back to council for comments.
Move for adoption.
If you can pause, um, do you have a comment from Counselor Lee?
Yes, uh, with this being in the first district and of course, that area, Lincoln Way and Sherman, uh, being a blighted area for a very long time, I am excited to see this opportunity of development coming and the increase in value of the land. So I just want to say as first district councilman, I am uh, very much excited that this blighted area is now is going to get the attention and then it will be a place where families can grow and young children can grow up and have a, a positive place to live that is affordable. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Davis had made a motion regarding Resolution twenty-four thirty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two a reading?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana. Commonly known as three twenty-one West Wayne Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one. An economic revalidation area for purposes of a ten-year real property tax abatement for Historical Hearthstone LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
The bill was heard in community investment this afternoon and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovich.
Thank you, Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the fourteenth floor. The uh, resolution before you for your consideration is a declaratory resolution for a ten-year mixed-use uh, real property tax abatement for property at three two one West Wayne Street. Um, it's been a vacant building for a long time. It's just, it's north of the stadium, um, just north of the um, Gates, Old Gates Lot. The developer owner petitioner is Historic Hearthstone LLC, um, who purchased the building earlier this year, um, it's seventeen thousand square feet. Um, it was built in the nineteen twenties, was originally a Ford dealership, um, has been through um, different, you know, was a service center and, and other different things um, for the automobile industry. Ms. Regina Emberton is the um, proprietor here. She's the owner of Historic Hearthstone. Um, her desire in renovating the building is to uh, have an anchor tenant that is a restaurant with family-oriented entertainment. It will also house Indiana landmarks and South Bend trade works, provide offices and workspace for them. Uh, when all said and done, the estimated, estimated private investment for this rehabilitation is two and a half million dollars. Um, you can see the employment impact there. Indiana Landmarks has, um, the screen hasn't changed. I don't know why, but um, the uh, let me stop sharing. There it is. The uh, Indiana Landmarks has three employees who will move over and work out of that building. Um, the restaurant is anticipating twenty full-time employees once it is up and running. Um, Regina Emberton is here, um, would be happy to answer any questions more about the project. Uh, the tax abatement is ten years. It coincides with the city's support for Ms. Emberton's ready application. Uh, the um, tax abatement would be included as part of the match that's required through that process. Um, currently, because it's a vacant building, it brings in only forty-six hundred dollars a year in property taxes. We anticipate um, after the project is completed, that, you know, we'll be looking at in excess of fifty-five thousand dollars um, over the ten years, um, with this abatement being used as a match, partly as a match for the ready application. Um, the significant taxes abated would be four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars through that time. But you can still see that over ten years, um, we estimate that we'll still be paying eighty-two thousand dollars. So I'll pause there. Um, I'll answer any questions you may have and I'll let Ms. Emberton say a few words.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, council, for considering this tax abatement. I'm really excited to be investing in the neighborhood. My name is Regina Emberton. I live just a few blocks from the property, actually at six fifteen West Colfax. And I'm just really excited about what's happening downtown, but I think there are little pockets that um, have gone too long with um, underutilized blighted buildings. And I'm excited to bring new life to this particular um, building here. It's a great location. It'll bring entertainment and activity to an area where a lot of residential, um, both affordable housing and mixed use is proposed for all around that area. And I hope for it to be a nice bridge between downtown South Bend and the, the near west side neighborhood. And I would be happy to answer any questions, but Mr. Lovich did a great job describing the project.
Nice. Council, is there any questions for the petitioner or the presenter? You guys must have done a great job. Seeing none, I will turn to the public to see if there's any public comments. Uh, Clerk Toronto, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Same said. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
The public portion is now closed. Council, I will turn back for comments. Counselor Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, President McBride. Thank you, Ms. Emberton. I just, I, I truly just want to thank you for the vision that you have for this space. As a um, as a resident who lives three blocks from there, I'm excited about this development um, and um, the development to come across the way in the Gates parking lot um, and in the Four Winds area. I'm also excited about what this particular development might spur along William Street. Um, so thank you for your investment in the neighborhood and for your vision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Lee.
I would just like to say thank you for the investment. I, it was really funny. About two weeks ago, I was over in that area and, and I was looking at that building and I said, somebody really needs to do something with this building. And two weeks later, it's before us right now. And normally, you know, a ten-year abatement, we wouldn't do it, but because it's going to help with the ready grant and help uh, impact a two-point-five million dollar investment in a building that's been sitting taxes four thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars a year. We're, we're, we're going to make that, make that money back. So uh, thank you for your investment and we hope that everything goes well and, and it becomes very successful and spurs more development. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two.
I move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Warner. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three a third, a, a reading?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Designating certain items, certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana. Commonly known as one, two, three, North Dr. Martin Luther. commonly known as 123 North Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, Luther King Jr. Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, 46601, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a nine-year real property tax abatement for AFP 111 Corporation.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the bill was heard in community investment this afternoon and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the 14th floor of this building. This declaratory resolution impacts a building that everyone in South Bend is very well aware of. It's the Doubletree Hotel right across from the Century Center. The declaratory resolution would, if adopted, begin the process for a nine-year tax abatement for a $9.2 million rehabilitation of the hotel and the atrium. The company AFP 111 Corp. is the petitioner and owner of the property. Since 2017, they've already invested $4.4 million in this building and will continue that investment to the degree of what I said was $9.2 million additionally. There's 110 full-time employees that work for the hotel. They would all be retained. And the petitioner anticipates hiring five new employees at the conclusion of this property, or excuse me, of this property conversion. I made a comment at the previous meeting that I couldn't remember if I put in a rendering of the restaurant in the atrium. So there, I wanted to make sure I had it in there so everyone could see it. I just wanted to click through a few slides that show what the project will entail. This is the lobby area. There's the restaurant again, and then the room conversions and updates. The tax abatement, as I mentioned, would be for nine years. The abatement would only be for about $122,000 over those nine years. This is because it's not our typical abatement where we present to council that involves dramatic rehabilitation of a vacant property, for example. You know, this is a, you know, actively used hotel. The investment on behalf of the owners and petitioner, you know, really shows their commitment in South Bend. And, you know, this is one way that we can support this incentive so that they can keep, you know, this hotel as really, you know, a showcase for the downtown area. I will pause there. Michael Hinks, CFO of the Ownership Group is here, and he would be happy to say a few words and answer any questions you might have.
Michael Hinks, Nine Park Place, Great Neck, New York is my offices. We're very happy and thank you for your consideration from the council. We look forward to continuing being a pillar in the community. We've been here since 2017. All in, we're over $40 million at this point. Even in COVID, we kept our doors open, so we impacted the citizens of South Bend. We currently host the Notre Dame football team every weekend when they're in town. We have a lot of other visiting teams, so I think we play an active role in your success in the downtown revitalization. So we look forward to a favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, is there any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, I want to open it up for the public portion. Clerk Toronto, do you see anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 24-33?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Same said. Is there anyone in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you. With that being said, the public portion is now closed. Council, I will, do you have any comments? Only thing I would say is that I'm excited to see the conversion and revitalization of that. I love the Doubletree, and just thank you for your commitment and everything that you all do in this community, and that is definitely will enhance downtown and for many, many years to come. So thank you so much for your continued investment.
Thank you. And all the old product that's coming out, we're making donations within the community. And also, I think we're supporting memberships at the zoo as part of this process as well.
Thanks. Wonderful. It's great.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Good Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 24-33 has been adopted. Thank you. Bills on first reading. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 61-24 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar year 2025.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 61-24 to person on finance for public hearing in third reading on October 28th.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 62-24 a reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first east-west alley south of Napier street between Chestnut Street and terminating the parcels and the first north-south alley east of Chestnut Street between parcels 018-3076-305301 and terminating the Norfolk Southern Railroad right-of-way.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 62-24 to Public Works and Property Vacation for public hearing in third reading on October 28th.
So move.
We'll move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Council, is there any unfinished business from council? Seeing none, is there any new business?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Madam President, is it possible? Well, I would like for our attorney to update us either through email or if necessary, executive session on what is the status of the Department of Justice lawsuit against the police department? Because people are asking questions about that, and I would like to have a better understanding than what I'm just reading in a newspaper on the news line. So I'd like to get a more clarity about that with that issue. And the second one, we have a train that is over near the Walnut, Indiana area. There's a little track over there, and it sounds its horn way after midnight. And we have passed a resolution that on the west side, you cannot have sounds. The train cannot give its horn after that time. And yet, this particular train continues to do that, has been doing it. And I would like for us to check into that. I couldn't, I can't figure out what line it is, but it's loud, and it can be 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning sometimes, and it's very loud. And I know it's in violation of the city code that we are doing, and it's been doing it on a regular basis. And you can't do it on the east side. We passed the one that said you can't do it on the west side. So I just can't understand why this one is doing it. So I would like for, if our city could look into, help us with that and figure those two things out.
Okay, I will get with the parliamentarian to discuss both items with him, and I will get back with you and the entire council regarding both.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, I will share.
Yes.
Just, it was a great week celebration at La Casa de Amistad, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month that just ended October 15th. And then we turned right around this past Saturday to celebrate the remainder of October as Filipino-American History Month. The first time that the city of South Bend has recognized Filipino-American History Month. So thank you to the mayor's office for that proclamation, and I was pleased to join you in that recognition.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will now turn to the privilege of the floor. Individuals wishing to address the council must state their name and residential address. Limited to three minutes only, and the maximum time for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. And we cannot discuss topics that were already previously heard on tonight's agenda. And with that being said, Ms. Kessel, welcome.
Good evening. Sue Kessel for Titi Kennedy Drive. I've been reading an interesting book by the honorable David M. Walker. Mr. Walker is the former U.S. Comptroller General that oversees all the federal budgets. I was fortunate to be included in a Zoom call with him, and as a budget enthusiast, it was exciting to be part of a discussion with the ultimate budget enthusiast in the country. He's currently on the Board of Truth and Accounting, which tracks debt levels in cities. Since South Bend now has accumulated 462 million in debt, South Bend can feel honored making this growing list of irresponsible cities. While you may seem to think it's cute to conceal public financial data about public tax dollars as public officials, you may not think it's quite so cute when in violation of the Financial Data Transparency Act. Mr. Walker has been instrumental in getting the Federal Financial Data Transparency Act through Congress. So here's what's on the horizon. The budgets will be federally mandated to be submitted on time in machine language format. Artificial intelligence will analyze it and report what needs to be done to fix it. I already know of 24 formulas that will be applied to municipal budgets. I was going to manually apply them to the formulas of the South Bend budget to see where it's gone off the rails, but you continue to obstruct the public from seeing how our public tax dollars are being misspent. You can continue to ignore me, but ignoring federal law is a different level of arrogance that probably won't turn out well for you. It will be even worse if corruption is discovered. Again, I encourage the city to replace the comptroller with an actual CPA, with municipal accounting experience, and the council hire a budget analyst to advise the council, just as you have your own legal counsel. The biggest question I get from the community is, is it gross incompetence, corruption, or both? I don't know what to tell them, but perhaps the federal government can answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the privilege of the floor.
Thank you. With that being said, we stand adjourned. Good night.